I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, place thereof posted on the bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grandi.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Pala.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to have such a huge crowd, and most of the crowd being our students. So I'm excited about that. Okay, so tonight we have, well, we're gonna start with public comment. Nobody signed up for public comment, Mr. DeVita?
No.
Okay, so we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we're gonna move into presentations. We have several presentations tonight, so I'm excited about that. And so we will start with our high school principal, Ms. Jody English. I don't know if I need this, but I'll use it. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'm so excited to have you all here. We're gonna recognize so many of our distinguished students, our clubs, our activities, our advisors. We're gonna start with our Student of the Month recipients. Just so you know, the students we recognize each month are seniors, and they're chosen by their teachers as students who exemplify the following traits. So, we're gonna go back to December. December's theme was "Live to Give." We looked for a student who shows a dedication to helping their community and exhibits generosity and kindness towards others. Congratulations to our December Student of the Month, Ms. Valentina Belashery. Come on up. You're gonna come up, we're gonna get a picture, okay? So just stand right here. January's theme is Passion First. We looked for a student who shows determination and always is challenging themselves. Actually, our January Student of the Month is not here because she's a D1 athlete and she is in competition. Passion first, so Ava Myers, congratulations to her. So if you see her. And then February's theme was We Are Connected. We looked for a student who is consistently a leader both in and out of the classroom. Student has been observed building relationships and working collaboratively with their peers. Congratulations to our February Student of the Month, Ms. Ava Jablonsky. Okay. You want a picture? I don't have a picture. Can you hold that for a second?
Here, let me take the picture with you. No, no, you can do it.
Yes, I know, I'm sorry. Can I make everybody turn for you? I get it. Okay, so moving on. This year, for those of you who don't know, our spring musical was Matilda. I was so excited when Ms. Jessen told me what the choice was because it's one of my children's favorite movie. It was in the backdrop of my house when my kids were little, so I was so excited. As I sat and I watched the production, I have to tell you, I was captivated by our student performances. Every detail was perfectly executed in a manner that was humorous, intelligent, tender-hearted. I'm so proud to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of the cast and the crew tonight. The production was filled with not only Cedar Grove High School students, but Memorial Middle School, North End, and South End students. Thank you to all who had a hand in making the play so successful, especially Ms. Jessen, Ms. Liebowitz, Mr. Remmy, Ms. Barbosa, Mr. Catalo, Mr. Koch, and Ms. Vogel. Before I invite the entire cast and crew to come on up and be recognized, I first want to recognize our seniors individually. So our senior members, when I call your name, please come up. Emily here. Adriana Casares. Eric Silverman. Sienna Giordano. Emma Millman. Phillip Kaminski. Alexandra Harnos. Samantha Voss. Gabby Fiorentino. Isabel Casal, you're on my shield, I'm so sorry, I want to high-five your name. My apologies, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Okay. All right, seniors, can you get together, please? Who? Isabel Casal, you're on my shield, I'm so sorry, I want to high-five your name. My apologies, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Okay. All right, seniors, can you get together, please? Isabel Casal, you're on my shield, I'm so sorry, I want to high-five your name. My apologies, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Okay. All right, seniors, can you get together, please? You might have to make two rows. No, I think we're good. Okay. You're in the front? All right. I'm sorry. Ready, one, two, three. Okay, wait, at this time, where are you going? Everybody else, the cast and the crew, come on up, let's recognize you. They're gonna sing you a song. You're getting more naked now. I don't know where she wants them all once. Here you guys, come here. And we have certificates for you guys too, okay? Stand right here, okay? Hi, Carl. How are you doing? Spread out, standing your lines. Here we go. Rehearsal tracks. 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 There's like 75 of them. Okay. Okay, at this time, we're gonna continue with our recognitions. So continuing to break new ground in the realm of high school athletics, the Cedar Grove eSports program is continuing to soar. In just their second full year with the Garden State eSports League, their Overwatch Team II made it to the state finals and emerged victorious in a tough conference. Street Fighter VI Winter Team also found success and had some very dedicated players. In the fall, they had a great turnout for Super Smash Brothers, that they had to register two teams to accommodate the demand. Now we have a championship caliber Super Smash team in full swing for the spring season and setting their sights on the playoffs. As they continue to grow and evolve, we are excited about the potential to engage in even more students and expand to reach competitive gaming within our school community. I'd like to thank our advisors, Mr. Tedesco, Mr. Potts, and then I'd like to call our eSports team's members up. Matt Casas. Kiko Gottfried-Simonelli. Phillip Kaminski. Jack Dai. Gio Patel. And Arda Durnsu. Congratulations. Here we go. Thank you. Good job. Okay. Moving on to robotics. First, for a brief history of the program, CGHS Robotics Team was established in 2021. During that inaugural season, the team designed, built, and entered one single robot into the VRX or VEX Robotics competitions. Last season, due to popular demand, the robotics team expanded by adding a second robot to their roster. Despite several members graduating last spring, the team was able again to enter two robots this season. The VRC does not separate schools into divisions by size, as many other programs may. Instead, all programs in New Jersey compete against one another in a single division. We mention this to give a proper perspective to the following incredible accomplishment. The Cedar Grove High School Robotics Team has qualified a robot for the New Jersey State VRC Championship in all three years of their existence. At the last tournament of the 2023-24 season, the robot teams qualified for the elimination round, earning a 12th seed and a 5th seed respectfully. This accomplishment alone places Cedar Grove Robotics Team amongst the elite programs throughout the state. Based on their performance at that competition and the scores they earned throughout the season, the Robot B Team qualified for New Jersey State VRC Championship, which took place at NJIT on March 9. Students on our B Squad ranked first for the majority of the tournament. Despite losing in the Elite Eight Round, Cedar Grove High School was a heartbeat away from qualifying for the VEX Worlds in Dallas, Texas, based on their incredible performance. I'd like to recognize both robot teams for their incredible success this season. Our Robot A Team, led by Captain Arda, Arda, I'm gonna miss your name, Durnsu. Members include Jason Mizinski, Phillip Kaminski, Brugu Patel, and Shalop Patel. Please come up, Robot A Team. Congratulations. If you could just stand right there, we're gonna get a picture of both teams. Congratulations, Captain. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our Robot B Team was led by Captain Viraj Padal. Darrell Laquesta and John Mize completed the drive team for Robot B. Please come up. I would also like to recognize Ms. Mirna Halawani and Mr. Dave Coster, who need to be commended for their time and effort. So many nights, I was leaving this building at 8, 9 o'clock, and they were still working in the lab. So congratulations to our robotics team and their advisors. Here we go. DECA. DECA premieres emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Some of this year's accomplishments from our DECA team include, while it's only in its second year, Mr. Goodman and Ms. McCarthy have doubled their students in size. The team has doubled from 21 to 42 students. This is a testament to the hard work and of their advisors. Of the 39 students who attended districts, four students qualified for states, Tessa Anthony, Jake Sariva, Adrian Lalgie, and Jethan Papa, in the team events and individual events. The remaining 16 students attended states, completed a 10-page paper for integrated marketing, and one team completed 20-page paper for franchise service. I'd like to recognize the students who participated in the state competition. Tyler Alvarez, come on up when I call your name, please. Tessa Anthony. Alicia Athar. Celia Aiden. Jasmine Jedudith. Darrell Laquesta. Adrian Lalgie. Callie Matthew. Nyla Medina. John Mize. Misoli Mangadori. Ava Najoka, no, not Najoka, how do you pronounce that? Viraj Pagal. Jethan Papa. Shalop Patel. Nicholas Rusimano. Jake Sariva. How do you pronounce that? Ava Nagatano. Ava Nagatano. I was like, okay, the three students that I haven't recognized yet, they all qualified for DECA Nationals and will be competing April 27th to May 1st in Anaheim, California. Monumental for our school. First time sending students to Nationals to compete, and it's only our second year. Please come up. Max Kapilov. Krish Patel. And Jonathan Williams. Okay. Okay, last one for me. So, this is a first for our district, and it's really exciting. Exciting. This year, we are recognizing students who achieved the New Jersey State Seal of Bilingual C. This is given to students who have studied and attained proficiency in at least one or more language. It's designated on their high school transcript and allows employers and universities to identify bilingual candidates, students with 21st century skills, and those who have prioritized the study of other languages and cultures. It shows and emphasizes the importance of being bilingual, okay? It facilitates, improves communications, and boosts the local economy and cultural understanding, which promotes social acceptance. Before I move on and acknowledge the students, I want to acknowledge my vice principal, Mr. Stupinyan, who organized, coordinated, and facilitated all of the testing here at Cedar Grove High School. Mr. Stupinyan, why don't you do the honors? There you go.
Okay, so our first senior class is gonna receive the Seal of Bilingual C. Carolina Janosik. Phillip Kaminski. Nicole Pastula. Sarah Borges. Adriana Casares. Jamie DeSilva. Julia Pineda. And Mathias Santos.
Mr. Stupinyan, get in there with that, please. Now we're gonna move on to Mr. Gogarty.
Good evening. First off, I'm here to present and recognize two of our athletic championship teams from this past winter season. Before I do that, I just want to congratulate all of our student athletes, coaches, winter teams for another really, really good winter athletic season. Just for a quick recap, our boys basketball team had a full three levels, R.C., JV, and freshmen, finished with a record of 16 and 11, and reached the quarterfinals of our Group One State sectional tournament, losing to the eventual champion, Norc Tech, in a very close game. The girls' basketball team finished 8 and 17 with a tough schedule, also won a state playoff game, upsetting the number 12 seed, and reached the quarterfinals of the Group One State sectional title. And our ice hockey team, Triops Wick, Clifton, and PV, finished 7 and 14. But I'm gonna be a little bit biased here, our 11 Cedar Grove hockey players really dominate that team with the ice, shift time, contributions, goals, assists, defense. Our RCG players really do a fantastic job on that ice hockey team. And now for two championship winter athletic teams, I would like to honor and acknowledge. The first is our wrestling team. They had an overall record of 15 and 9. They went an undefeated 6-0 in the Super Essex Conference Liberty Division to win our fifth SEC Division title. The 2024 SEC Liberty Division Champions are... Andrew Buckingham. Giovanni Casilli. Kenneth Salento-Cow. Jamie DeSilva. Nick Genuarrio. Bobby Kelly. Greg Vitale. Peter Samferescu. Connor Kearney. Pierce Asphalt. Michael Cannarelli. Jerry Delesio. George Dakar. Richie Galliotto. Gerard A Mercy. Jake Sariva. Tommy Zika. Nick Testa. Nick Constantini. Bryce Kent. Luke Okle. James Polacano. Niko Zunick. And our head coach, Mike Rizamini. Congratulations to our 2024 SEC Liberty Division Champions. Okay, and last but not least is our competition cheer team. This group has basically been going, working out, and practicing since early August. Coach McCarthy and Coach Giacobi and their group worked tirelessly all year long. They start this routine back in August, and about October and November becomes five, six days a week of tweaking, changing, and trying to perfect this routine. Coach McCarthy approached me towards the end of last year about, you know, moving to more of a UCA type of competition and division, which the scoring is a little tougher, the competitions are tougher, the teams we go against are a little tougher. They put in the work. This past season, they have performed all over the place, from New Jersey to Hershey Park to Orlando, Florida. Through the ups and downs this season, they finished on a very high note, saving their best for last, and winning the 2024 NJ CDCA Cheer and Dance Division Group One State Title. I would like to recognize Emma Fusco, Ava Pietrowski, Rachel Harmon, Gabriella DiMatteo, Daniela Basile, Alina Kaphon, Diana Darpino, Angelina Tangora, Maggie Toomey, Victoria Ventola, Kayla DiMatteo, Adriana Lopez, Ava Mafucci, Vanessa Robinson, Madeline Heenan, and our coaches, Nicolette McCarthy and Julia Giacobi. Once again, our 2024 NJ CDCA Cheer and Dance Division Group One State Champions.
You could just say that that was my report?
Honestly, that kind of wraps it up.
I was like, I'll probably rather do it after than around here.
Good night. Thank you for coming.
How are you? Good to see you. How you doing? We just have two, two more to go.
Couple more almost there.
Feels like it.
Are we good? Can I start? Good to see you. Good evening. I'm Steve Goodman, advisor for DECA. Nicolette McCarthy is the other advisor for DECA. Last time we met, we were talking about states, and I said at the end of that presentation, the next step would be Nationals. And I said, well, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. And we're crossing that bridge because of these three gentlemen who did a fantastic job in states. They are our first representatives to go to Nationals for Cedar Grove, so it's a phenomenal step for us. So, it's the International Conference out in Anaheim. It is April 27 through May 1st. There will be approximately 22,000 students from the United States and Canada. There will be students competing against schools in the entire country under their competition assignment. I will be going. Jonathan Williams, who's a junior, Max Kapiloff, and Krish Patel, who are sophomores. We will be the four going. I will be the advisor and chaperone. The accommodations, we're going to be staying at the Sheridan Park, which is across the street from the conference center. It's $150 per attendee. The approximate cost for the entire thing for the students will be between $800 and $900 for flights and for the hotel stay. We will be, well, this is the agenda, April 26, 27, 28, 29, and the 30th, we'll be checking out on the 1st. They'll have activities for the students every single day. Our events will be on Sunday, and the finals will be on Monday. We plan on doing fundraising through the can shakes, t-shirt sales, and we also have a letter that we've designed to go to the businesses in the area to ask for donations for the students. And that's pretty much it. So I just wanted to thank you for the time. We're wishing these gentlemen lots of luck, and thank you again for your time, and we appreciate it. Nicolette, you anything? Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, so my name is Paul Lurch. I'm from Lurch, Vincy, and Bliss. I'm here to present the audit results from the 2223 year. I'll certainly be brief. I think that overall, I want to start by saying that the board received on all of its three opinions, an unmodified opinion, clean opinions. And that's really what you're striving for. There are no issues, no significant deficiencies, nothing to report that would hinder those opinions. So that's really what you're striving for, those three. I will also say that this year's audit report, if you look at the management report itself, there were no audit comments this year. I know last year, we had some issues, we had some significant issues. Those were rectified. And so that's positive news, and I think, you know, the board is certainly in the Business Administration, and that office is going in the right direction, having seen that. Just briefly, just quickly about, you were subject to a federal and state single audit. And really what that means is that even though you did receive a clean opinion on your financial statements themselves, and then we have to do an opinion on governmental auditing standards, then once you spend more than $750,000 in either federal or state programs, it triggers another audit. And that's identified as a single audit, and simply means we need to go test specific grant compliance with those programs that we determined to be major programs for testing purposes. So just to give everyone a little bit of a perspective, the district spent over $10 million in state programs that were funded by the state. We did test some of those programs. Again, we had no issues with any of those compliance verification processes. In the federal side, the district spent $1 million, just over $1 million. And that's still the residual effect of all the funding that came through the federal government with the ARPA money, the CARES money, coronavirus funding. That is really on the wind down now. I think if you look at last year's audit report, we spent over $2 million on those funds. So those numbers are certainly coming down. But of course, it exceeds the $750,000, so we did test some of the specific programs. And those programs, again, dealt with the ARPA programs, because those are considered high-risk audit programs. And so what we really do is we test to make sure that the district is in compliance with allowable costs. And that's the most significant component when you're going through the audit of single audit components. So having said all of that, this particular year, it seems like every single year we come up and present, we have a new governmental auditing standard in the art environment. Last year was GASB '87. This year is GASB '96. And '96 is really dealing with subscription-based services. So it's really like intellectual property, if you will. So what happens is that now, under the new pronouncements, that if you enter into agreements that are beyond the one year, and they're for subscription-based intellectual property, that you have to then determine whether or not they're material to the financials. If they are, then we need to record a right to use that asset and the corresponding liability. So things just seem to get more complicated each year. We went through the evaluation with Michael. We did not have anything here that was material or that extended beyond the 12 months. So as long as you keep that within a one-month cycle, a one-year cycle, I'm sorry, then there's no need to go through that evaluation process. So that's new. That was the '96 GASB. Just some activity, the Food Service Fund, you had a net profit of $86,000 this year. Fund equity then is up to now $367,000. That's your major program, is part of the Enterprise Fund. And then I'm just going to touch base here on the results of operations. So Exhibit C1, which is the general fund, it's the schedule of revenues, expenditures, and budgetary fund balance. It's really your budgetary statement. So you're developing, and I think you're actually voting on a budget tonight for the upcoming school year. So this exhibit actually tracks all your revenues and expenditures, compares them to what you originally budgeted, plus any modifications. So it's your P and L for your operating fund itself. So the year ending June of '23, the district ended its total surplus of $8,449,000, up from the previous year of roughly $1 million. And we have various components that the money gets restricted in, and some of it is unrestricted. So I'm going to start from the bottom of the page and say that the unassigned fund balance now was $1,064,000. It dropped dramatically from last year because this is the first year in the past four that the excess balance calculation is now 2% of your expenditures. Because of COVID, the state of New Jersey decided they were unsure, and they wanted to make sure the boards can retain a little bit more of their surplus. So then that calculation went from 2% to 4%. And so this year, the state now, all the Board of Educations have a maximum of 2%. So that number is now $1,064,000. And 2% is really somewhere about $775,000, but of course, there are additions and exceptions to the rule as to why we can increase that number. So that's your free balance. Then we have assigned fund balances. We have encumbrances of $548,000, and that just means reservation of equity. A prime example would be the contract with Lurch, Vincy, and Bliss. So you would contract with the auditing firm to come in and do the audit. So we entered into a contract, but yet the services are not performed until after the year begins, year ends, rather. So that's why it's a reservation of equity. $271,000 is established for the current school year to balance the budget as a designated subsequent expense. Then you have some of your restricted funds. You have maintenance reserves, roughly $1 million in maintenance reserves that are restricted specifically to maintain the facilities. And then you're left with an unemployment, which is relatively unchanged, that reserve as well, and that's to be used for future unemployment expenses. And then we have capital reserve. That capital reserve balance is $3.2 million, and that's to be used for, obviously, facility improvements. And then as I sat here last year, we go through this progression, and we determine is there any money left after we look at the total value, and then we have all these various components. Anything left is going to be identified as excess surplus. So when I was here last year and we spoke, we had an excess surplus of $801,000. $801,000. So that means that this year, that that money is being utilized to balance the budget in the '23, '24 school year. That and along with the $271,000. But this particular year, at the end of June of '23, the excess balance going through that progression is $1,186,000. That'll be budgeted in your budget when you do '24, '25. Right, '24, '25, yes. So, as I said, I don't have any comments or recommendations to talk about. That kind of gives a little bit of a presentation to where the financial state of the district. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me? No? But overall, I think, listen, the district's in a much better spot than we were last year. That was important. We got through that without any really serious consequences. We were able to get that penalty abated, which I think is critical, because that was going to be a substantial dollar value as well. And I'm confident, because going through the audit process and going through that with Mike, that now the control process is there, double-checking that particular process to make sure that it should never happen again. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Would you like to do your report before? We have one more presentation.
Whatever, I mean, whatever you want.
Yeah, why don't you? Because I feel bad, I don't want you to have to.
Okay, I don't really have that much.
We're going to switch gears for one second.
Yeah, I'll be quick. The first thing I just want to say is how hugely successful Lip Sync was as an event. The juniors did win. They were really, they were really great. We're just really excited that we were able to get the tradition back up again, especially because it's a lot of fun, plus it's a good moneymaker, so we're hoping it'll continue next year. In terms of upcoming events, we have the Spring Pep Rally, which is going to be the day before we go on break. And then All School Council is also in the process of planning a sort of like Earth Day Walk, which is basically when students leave during lunch and walk on the trails and pick up trash. We've done that in years prior, but... And then also Peer Leaders is planning a Senior Citizens Dance. So we have a lot of exciting things coming up, which I'm excited about.
Very nice. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Last but certainly not least. Do you have a... Okay. All right, it's fine.
So first, I just want to thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. This is a showcase of some of our accomplishments and initiatives from over this course of the school year. Honestly, the year's not over yet, so we have a lot more coming. But I do know that we are on the right path to academic success for our students. But before I even move into the goals, I really need to take a moment to thank Mr. Pearson, Ms. Barbosa, Mr. Stupinyan, Mr. Gogarty for the unified vision and assistance with the development of programs in the building, and to ensure that we are moving the pendulum in the right direction. I have to also thank the teachers for their creativity, flexibility, and hard work. You know, we challenged them, we said these are our goals, and they have done everything we've asked them to do. They've really taken ownership. So I'm really excited to see... So I'm really excited to see, you know, what the years come, what happens in the next couple of years. And they've really been rising to our challenges. So a couple of things. So, you know, we really looked at scores for the first two goals for the building. The first one is definitely rooted in math. And we looked at two parts of math. We looked at our NJSLA scores from eighth grade math. And we want to compare them to what happens at the end of this school year. So our NJSLA, for those of you who don't know, is a grades three through eight statewide assessment. I'm sorry, grades three through nine statewide assessment. And that's mandatory for all students in the state of New Jersey. The second part of the goal was to increase scores on our NJGPA. That's our graduation proficiency exam, and that's a junior-level test. And I'm just going to put it out there, we have already tested. The state gives us one window, and we tested for our NJGPA last week for both ELA and math. But that does not mean we don't continue working towards these goals. So we'll start with our math. We have taken over this year-long instructional focus on, you know, not only scores, but other practices as well. So we have challenged our teachers to really identify and isolate the standards to target instruction. We've adopted a program called Edge Elastic, and that provides e-test and standard-based instruction, and helps our teachers tailor to the deficits and discrepancies in our classrooms. We did weeks prior to NJGPA test preparation. So the thing about NJGPA is that it's given in junior year when our students are taking Algebra II. However, the test is Algebra I and Geometry. So our teachers really went back to spiral reviews, infusing old skills into the new skills to make sure that we are where we need to be, so we can, you know, bring up those scores. Apply test-taking strategies, the taking certain variations or certain skills and looking at how they can use that one skill in mathematics to answer and identify all different questions. Test typing questions, test-type questions into daily warm-ups, do-nows, exit slips, and then using all of those online tools. And this is specific to math and specific to those NJSLA and NJGPA scores. However, we also asked the teachers to dig deeper. So we went into what we call a diagnose and prescribe model, taking the data from these platforms, Edge Elastic, Linkit, Pearson, Daily Assessments, pen and pencil or pen and paper, and really, you know, differentiate, identify those discrepancy and tailor our instruction towards our students. We asked our teachers to have our students really understand the why in mathematics, so they look deeper, so our students can explain, not just come up with an answer. We, you know, we identify this show what you know and really increase the ability to write about mathematics. And that's that interdisciplinary approach, where we're looking at math and our other core three subjects. We also asked our teachers to get our students excited about math. We know that kids do better when they're in a classroom where they feel passionate, where they feel excited, where they're moving, where they're doing. So there's this concept that we've been using, movement in math. Ms. Barbosa was able to put vertical whiteboards in all of our math rooms. Our students are up. They're moving. They're working collaboratively. Our Algebra I teachers are working on gamification and competitive learning. And then we have, the math department loves their competitions. So they have a lot of interdepartmental competitions, including, we had over 65 students compete in a pie day competition, where they were identifying pie around the school. Now, you may say, what's the big deal? It was exciting. They took their own lunch period to participate in a math competition. And so when they're vested and they're excited, they want to give back and they want to learn more. So we're really happy and pleased where we are with our mathematics. My second goal was primarily, was all about freshmen. I will give credit, our NJGPA scores from last year were ELA were quite high, and we're really excited to see where they are again this year. So we looked at, again, NJSLA for freshmen from last year. This year, looking for growth for ELA as well as our Linkit Form C. These tests have not been given yet. Our Linkit Form C and our NJSLA will be given in May. So again, the data is not here yet. We'll have to wait for the longitudinal data to come in at the end of the school year and into next year. However, we, again, focused on this year-long instructional focus on ELA standards, skills, question types, integration of these daily, into the daily classroom instruction. We are using Linkit, Edge Elastic, the NJSLA Digital Library, practice tests. We created folders for NJSLA and NJGPA for our ELA teachers. We also, Mr. Pearson, created interdisciplinary handbook that has state rubrics, expectations, ideas, standards across the board for science, social studies and ELA. So everybody is using the same approach. And that way, our students know those expectations when they go to each and every classroom. And we're very excited about that. We used increased usage of Linkit. They dove into, they analyzed NJSLA scores. They're looking at Form A to Form B. And they're really focusing right now on the bubble and the approaching range of the ELA students. We want to see everybody rise, high level, low level. But our biggest group of students are the bubble and the approaching. So we want to see the biggest movement in that category. We have provided professional development. I keep talking about Edge Elastic. It's a platform. It's wonderful. We actually have two math teachers who are very well-versed in it, and they have turnkeyed it to our ELA and math departments. We have math teachers using, participating in webinars, investigating Desmos. We use building thing in classrooms. It's a book. Structured horizontal and vertical articulation led by our department supervisors and effective strategies for success on the NJSLA was our ELA PD from last month. Supervisors, principals, we're doing check-ins. We're doing department meetings. We're having conversations. How can we help? How can we support? We can give the expectations. They're doing the work, right? They're in those classrooms. So how can we monitor and support? And they're giving us feedback of what they need and how we can continue on this path for next year. My third goal was student involvement. As you can see by tonight, we are, we, so I'm so proud. I can't even tell you. We recognized over 150 students here tonight. But we want our students not only to participate in events, but we want them to be active leaders, active learners, and give back to their community. So some things that we did right at the beginning of the school year, Mr. Gogarty and I set up a leadership forum. We identified student leaders by their coaches and their advisors. There were over 60 students. And we gave them their own professional development on what it means to be a leader. They turnkeyed that to other students in the building. We provided an academic reflection where we provided students time in an extended homeroom to review their own data, to make them really owners of their own information, so they can identify what they need to do to be successful. That was a voluntary survey or not a survey, a needs assessment. We had over 360 responses. There's only 460 students in the building. Okay, so three-quarters of our students responded. Not only responded, but provided feedback that we read. Ms. Barbosa, we went through every spreadsheet. And then we identified students who gave us really great information, and we talked to them. We grabbed them. We said, we read what you said. And they went, wow, you actually read it? Yes. We learned from you. We learned from each other. At the end of marking period one, and again at the end of marking period three, we do Core Four feedback for the teachers, where the students get to, in those classes, fill out a Google form and give the teacher's feedback on programs and strategies and their platforms that they're using. If they're successful, if they're helping them, what they would, what they would recommend in a very respectful way. Again, giving our students a voice and helping them identify their goals for this year and the future. Our AP students, we heard them last year. I know they came out. So what we did was we had our student assistance counselor, you know, do a needs assessment on them, creating focus groups to support them both academically and emotionally for their stress and anxiety. We want to make sure that we're giving them every opportunity to be successful in their academics. And we know if they're struggling with that anxiety, they can't quite get there. So Ms. LaFune is working with our students. Ms. Barbosa and I actually did another needs assessment on our students because we're looking at, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but we are really looking at future programming for pathways in science and medical interests. So we are, you know, we gauge the interests of our students. Who wants marine biology? Who wants more nursing programs, PT? How can we support that moving forward and more dual enrollment around the sciences? Our STEAM pathway is so successful. What can we do for those science programs? And then, good old fun, right? Good old things that we brought back. Lip Sync reemerged. We sold out this auditorium. It was wonderful. Pep rallies. Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Leonard have really taken ownership. We have a pep rally for every season to celebrate every athletic team. We did an in-house wrestling match right before winter break, where we had a wrestling match, you know, during the school day, and it was great. The Senior Citizens Dance is coming back. CGA also had their Senior Citizens Dinner. Where over 100 community members came out with our student volunteers. And the peer leaders are working on monthly meetings with the freshmen on mentorship and support and how they can get their voice out to the community. Okay, I just spoke a lot, and I'm sorry. This is not over. This is really just the beginning. Every year is a new chance. We're super excited to see where the data takes us next year, but also how we can better improve our students. You know, there are opportunities. We want to give them everything they can in this building. And I work with a really great team. So any questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, hair here, music person.
What's that mean? You do the microphone?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for that. I'm really excited about to see what's to follow. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate that, the work and the effort. Okay. Go. I'm being ordered to go. All right, so we're going to move right into business. It's been a late night, a long night so far, so we'll move right into our business. Jeez, I got to get myself organized here. Before we get into our resolutions, I just want to remind everybody in the community that's listening, this Sunday is Treps. Very excited about that. On Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the high school gym, there's over 55 young entrepreneurs coming out and selling their products. So if you have not ever attended, you're missing something really special. So I encourage everyone. I did hear it's supposed to rain. Bring your umbrellas, because you don't want to miss it. It's really an incredible event. And I thank all the parent volunteers who have dedicated hours and hours of time for this program. It's one of the best. So Sunday, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the high school gym. All right. Mr. Grasso, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, it's really quick. I wanted to share something. So Kristin Masato, who is in our, one of the supervisors in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, was able to acquire a very, a grant that will impact a large group of our students. In January, the DOE reissued the New Jersey Learning Acceleration Program High Impact Tutoring Grant. So these monies are intended to assist a very targeted group of students in grades three and four through high-impact tutoring. This means that they will receive instruction with a qualified instructor in a group that is no larger than three students to one teacher, and even smaller if possible. Once we move out of the pre-award process, it is our intention to identify qualified and interested teachers to work directly after school to help support our students gain the confidence and skills they need to achieve their full potential, which I believe it's $58,000. $58,000. And so Kristin worked extremely hard. I want to just give her a huge shout-out. Because this, her, her, she worked really hard on this, and her work is really going to bring some really great, great tutoring to our students.
So let me ask you a question. Is it, both our staff potentially could be the tutors as well as outside staff?
It will be, it will be our staff.
Okay. Because I do believe you have the option to bring in.
You do.
You know, in addition. That's fantastic. That's really great to hear that. Thank you, Ms. Masato, if you are listening. Okay. All right, under the Business Administrator's Report, can I please have a motion for G1 through G11? Roll, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi. Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Pallack. Mrs. Keegan. Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Can I have a motion for H1 through H4 and H6? And I'm administratively pulling H5. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi. Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Pallack. Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, accepted abstain from H2C.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Can I have a motion for I1 through I6? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi. Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Pallack. Mrs. Keegan. Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Curriculum and Instruction, a motion for J1 and J2? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi. Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Pallack. Mrs. Keegan. Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Special Services, can I have a motion for K1 and Addendum A1, please? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi. Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Pallack. Mrs. Keegan. Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, at this point, I open the meeting to public comment. Any items on or off? I don't have the list. Okay, I closed that portion. Announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be, actually, it's tomorrow. So, yes, so tomorrow will be, our next board meeting will be moving right into closed session, and it would, it'll be round two of our superintendent interviews. Followed by Friday for a second meeting that will go, we will move right into closed session for second round of superintendent interviews. Same thing for March 26, which would be the third round, moving right into closed session. And so the next open session will be April 30 at 6:30, closed 7:30, public portion, and that is at North End. All right. At this point, I motion to close. Everybody agreement? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.